All right, good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is July 30th, 2024, and the time is 9:32 a.m. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Sandelli to do the invocation. Could we all please rise?
Well, good morning, and please, our heads give thanks. Thank you to your Lord for the blessings you have bestowed on us for this new day. You have provided us with opportunities we seek to fulfill. You have given us strength to meet new challenges. You have surrounded us with those who seek to make our community a better place for all. Let your words guide our actions and always be reminder to be thankful. In your name, amen.
Please join me, let's lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and free to the world as one.
All right, please be seated. Okay, we have no ceremonial presentation this morning, so we will move to the recap. Are there any items for the recap this morning? None. So we will move to the dissent agenda. Any discussion on the dissent agenda? We don't have it. All right, okay, so we'll move on. All right, at this time, we're going to convene as the Board of Port Commissioners of Lee County Port Authority. I would like to recognize our Port Authority Attorney to introduce the item.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good morning, Board members. The first item on your agenda is sitting as the Board of Port Commissioners and is with regard to the employment agreement with Mr. Steve Henigan. Commissioners, as you recall in the past, you selected Mr. Henigan to be the Port Director, and you requested the Chairman to negotiate an employment agreement with Mr. Henigan. That activity took place, which you have before you, was the product of those negotiations. The initial term of the agreement is for two years, followed by three-year automatically renewing terms. That is consistent with the employment agreements you have with other contractual employees. Mr. Henigan is here. If you have any questions of him, I would point out that he has executed the agreement in advance of your board meeting, and we would respectfully request approval at this time.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
Nope.
Okay, I will open up for public comment. I have a card from Marcia Ellis.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I recently spoke at the last airport meeting in support of Mr. Henigan, who I think is perfect for this job. Folks in the public may not realize that he has previous experience coming out of Houston. I think an airport that we can all relate to since Hurricane Harvey. We know Houston did receive 60 inches of precipitation. So I think he brings the right kind of experience to this job. I'm looking forward to having consistency because I am a neighbor to the airport, living south of it, as a receiver of those waters. I appreciate the consistency, the investment that Mr. Henigan is making in this community with his family, and I am very much support, as a member of the public, his appointment to this position.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Glad to do so.
Motion to approve from Commissioner.
Oh, second.
Rain, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? Seeing none, passage unanimously, four to zero. Mr. County Attorney, please.
Ms. Chairman, if you would now, please reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, sir. Okay, at this time, I would like to reconvene as the Lee County Board of Commissioners and move to the administrative agenda items.
Ms. Chairman, if I could respectfully request that you approve the same contractual agreement with Mr. Henigan, sitting as the Board of County Commissioners. Same terms and conditions, same explanation, just different entities. So we would, again, respectfully request approval.
I'll move the item again, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the item from Commissioner Rain, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, I have a public comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, County Attorney. Any public comment on that this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Sandelli, I mean, Commissioner Rain, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? No objections, item moves four to zero. Okay, we will move on to the administrative agenda. Is that right? We're all done? Congratulations, Steve. Welcome aboard.[312.33][312.33][applause] I know you're going to do a fine job, and I think, I agree with Marcia Ellis's comment. I think we have the right person. Congratulations. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to administrative agenda. Mr. County Manager, please introduce item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2425 ad valorem rates for trim notice and set the public, or I'm sorry, the budget public hearing dates. I'd like to ask Mr. Wynton to present the item.
Commissioners, as the County Manager said, this is to set the maximum millage rates for the upcoming fiscal year for property taxes during September. These rates can be adjusted downward, but cannot go upward. Most of these that you see are municipal services taxing units where neighborhoods agree to tax themselves for things such as lighting, security, landscaping, boat ramps, dredging, et cetera. So all of those have been either approved by committees or for lighting units that don't have committees, that's what's required to pay the bills for the upcoming year.
Okay, any questions for staff at this time? They say none, I will public comment. Anyone like to speak on this item? Marcia Ellis, you said you're speaking on everything. Do you want to come and speak on this as well?[400.00][400.00][laughter] You're good? All right. Anyone else want to speak on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the end. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Sandelli, a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Any objections? Seeing none, item number two moves unanimously. Okay, Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number three.
Did I miss? Mr. Chair, we just went through that one.
I'm sorry?
We just did that one, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Okay, there are no items on the public hearing agenda for discussion at this time? Any walk-ons, any carryovers? Okay. Commissioner items. Commissioner Pendergrass, do you have?
No item.
Yeah. Commissioner Sandelli?
No item.
Commissioner Rain?
No.
I have none. Okay, at this time, we will do a public presentation of matters. Is that what you're asking? Yes, okay. I have a bunch of cards, so some people didn't mark anything, so I'm just going to go through the cards, and you can come up and speak on the items that you would like to speak on. We'll start off with Greg Daughtry.
Greg Daughtry or Cortez?
I have a. Say it again?
Daughtry is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Speaking about this Amendment Four that's coming up in November, and speaking to the Commissioners to look at this amendment as really a violation of natural law and a threat to Floridians, to the sanctity of life, beginning at the moment of conception. And we look at this, and I wonder too, from the Commissioners, and how you would respond as Floridians to see special interest groups spending millions to fund in special interests to actually change our Constitution. That, to me, seems like an injustice in and of itself. But more fundamentally, we look at the truths that we profess as Americans in the Declaration of Independence, that we hold these truths to be self-evident, and we begin with a prayer, and we acknowledge God as our Creator, and we say that all men are created equal, that we be given unalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This amendment would obliterate all of that. It's a threat to all Floridians, so I'd like your Commissioners to at least be a voice to that and represent Lee County in saying no to Amendment Four.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.[600.22][600.22][applause] Just so we can go ahead, we would, please, no clapping, hissing, complaining. Let everyone speak, and feel freely to speak without any judgment on them, please. I'm going to go ahead and let everyone know, we have a green light, yellow light, red light. Green light, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute, so please try to wind it down. We have a lot of cards today, and we're going to try to move through them pretty fast. So what I'm going to do to kind of speed things up is I'm going to call who's coming up and who's next. All right, so who's ever next can get out and kind of be ready to come up, if that's okay. All right, so up next is Dick DiLorenzo, and next after that will be Marcia Ellis. If I mispronounce your name, please state your name as you come up as well.
Good morning. I've done some little research on this, and it seems that the, in the Bible, we see that the, they had child sacrifice back in the days of Moloch and Baal, and this was corrected by Christianity and Judaism to be a bad thing to do. And this lasted all the way up until the 1973, when we had the infamous Roe v. Wade. So in the, in our Constitution, in our Constitution, the Fifth Amendment says that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or the pursuit of happiness and/or property without due process of law. So who are persons? Persons are, include the unborn and the born. So in the, in the early days, up until 1973, abortion was prohibited by almost all of the states. And then Roe v. Wade came along and abolished that and said that abortion had to be followed in all the states. So in Florida, we have the, we have the so-called heartbeat bill, which provides for abortion basically up to six weeks, and there are exceptions for rape, incest, and the life of the mother. And then they came along with this Amendment Four, which says that, that all you have to do is show that the health, not the life, the health of the mother is being jeopardized. And who does that analysis? A so-called health provider, which could be anybody. So basically, what you have is abortion right up until birth of the child. So we're against this. We think that abortion should be, should be regulated and not a constitutional amendment to provide that, that you have unlimited abortions in the state of Florida. It's going to make us the abortion capital of the world. And we have 84,000 abortions last year in Florida. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Marcia Ellis.
Good morning.
Good morning. Up next will be Jenny Barrett.
Good morning. Marcia Ellis, for the record. So I have quite a bit of literature that I'm seeking to share with you gentlemen, and I'm going to give it over here to the attorneys to distribute. So I've been hearing some concern for the unborn today. I echo those concerns, but I come at it from a different perspective. Pope Francis has stated that PFOS, which is our forever chemicals and a type of pollution that's found in construction and demolition debris, waste water affluent, and other sources, are a sin, and their careless pollution, the careless pollution, is a sin against man. And I just want to let that sink in a second. The Catholic Council of Bishops has spoken out that pollution and PFOS pollution is something, is a national priority for us to address. And we trust that our leaders in the community are protecting us against this pollution, are protecting our waters, are protecting our children, are protecting our source wells, because the impacts to the unborn are grave. The developmental impacts, the impacts to their future reproduction are affecting the unborn because they are so sensitive to this pollution. Hence, we've had the EPA establish a four nanograms per liter limit for the public supply drinking water. And I'm very concerned about folks that are on DSS wells, domestic self-supply, folks out in Lehigh, where we have a great number of children who are drinking this water, and we don't know how contaminated it is. I don't think that there is enough oversight in this community, and in fact, I'm sharing some papers today about one of the persons, that is David Mulika, who is running to be the next Commissioner and sit in these chambers, and how he has polluted a 13-acre lake and a site off of Gator Road. And we're talking hazardous waste, solid waste, solvents, volatiles, all in this lake getting into our groundwater. And I'm asking, gentlemen, that if you're considering taking a position on Amendment Four, that you take a strong position against allowing polluters to ascend to power in this county, and you take responsibility for what's in the ground out at the construction demolition landfill, what's in the ground out at Benita Springs Fire Station, and we protect our children.
Thank you. Jenny Barrett. Up next will be Tara Jenner.
Hello. I wasn't really planning on speaking today, but here it goes. I'm speaking on Amendment Four. There is a lot wrong with this bill. It's about a 34-word document. There are no definitions, which means if this goes through, then Florida's going to spend a lot of money on legal things, and people are going to try to define it themselves. The word consent is replaced with notification when it comes to parental consent. That's a big problem, because we're going to have a lot, this is going to be a safe haven for pedophiles. Instead of a family destination to go to Disney or whatnot, a happy place, you're going to have a lot of people that are going to come here and do very, very evil things to children. I don't think anybody wants that. That is what I really look at this bill, because this could be religious, it could be an emotional thing. However, we have to look at this, you know, with common sense. I don't know why it is where it is, but that's where we're at. So not only that, but, well, you know what? I'm not a very good speaker, so I think that's pretty, pretty much what I'm going to have to say. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Jenner. Up next will be Virginia McGowan.
Good morning, Tara Jenner. I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Lee County GOP, and I'm also here speaking as a private citizen. In the annual meeting of the Republican Party of Florida on February 10th in Wesley Chapel, the Republican Party of Florida adopted a resolution opposing Amendment Four. As a recovering lawyer, I'd like to state that I think constitutions are something that need to be limited, defined, and very focused. Specifically, our Constitution, whether it's the U.S. Constitution or the state of Florida, is supposed to be there exclusively for the purpose of creating a limited and defined federal and state government for the purposes of securing the liberties of the individuals. If you print out the Florida State Constitution, depending upon the font, it runs approximately 74 pages in length, and it includes a myriad of items that have absolutely no bearing on the purpose of a Constitution. It actually is being utilized to subvert the purpose of legislation, which is to allow laws to be created by those we elect to represent us here in Tallahassee on an annual basis and biannual basis in order to be able to modify the laws, tweak them when they maybe not be perfectly done in the first place, and to reflect the will of the individuals as things change and proceed throughout our state. I would like to note that currently, we do have statutes that specifically address the issue of when abortions should or should not be allowed. Right now, if Amendment Four is repealed, the Florida heartbeat protection will also be impacted significantly, which includes rescinding a 24-hour waiting period and sonogram requirement. It will eliminate parental consent, and minors seeking an abortion will be authorized without any parent notification, and they will have to pick up the pieces for those children when things go south afterwards. And it will do away with clinical safety regulations for women by abolishing the legislator's power to regulate the abortion industry in virtually any way whatsoever. One of the things that I look at when I look at Amendment Four is the fact that it is extreme and very poorly drafted. There are more, there are more definitions used in our state constitution protecting suckling pigs, suckling pigs, than there are in this particular amendment dealing with the life of the preborn and the health of the mother. So I encourage the Board to consider a resolution standing firmly against the adoption of Amendment Four and doing what is needed in order to express that.
Thank you, Ms. Jenner. Ms. McGowan, next. And up after that will be Kristy Thornton.
Good morning. My name is Virginia McGowan. I'm not a speaker. I am speaking here, however. I think it's, this is the same measure that surprised Michigan. It's, this is being put out in very conservative states all over the country by Planned Parenthood and other abortion providers. And they're wording it in such a way that it might seem all right, and this might be a good idea, and they're doing that kind of advertising, and they're, and people woke up in other states and said, wait a second, that isn't what I thought it said. Said, don't read the entire, however verbiage there is. And I think that it's horrendous. It's not women's rights. There are two people involved here from the time of inception. You have two people, and you can't just railroad over the baby, the fetus, whatever you want to call it. It's a human being. And I basically am just arguing to, if we, if we have to have it, I had a tubal pregnancy. I had no problem, of course, this was a long time ago, but it was, it was not considered an abortion, and it wouldn't be considered an abortion today. It would be taking care of the mother to save her life because she couldn't bring the baby to term. So when they start talking about things like tubal pregnancies and you'll never be able to have one, that's so, that's a lie. And a lot of what's happening in their advertising is a lie. And I think we have to look at it with a really critical mind of what's, how they want to change, and to put it in the Constitution is crazy, because you won't be able to touch it. Look how long it took for Roe v. Wade. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kristy Thornton. And next up after that will be Kathleen, Kathleen Danahue?
I'm going to respectfully drop the public comment.
Okay, you're Ms. Thornton? Ms. Thornton, okay, all right, thank you, ma'am. Kathleen?
It's Catherine.
It's Catherine, I now see it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. So my name is Catherine Danahue, and I'm a private citizen, speaking here as a private citizen, but I was also a pregnancy clinic counselor and a post-abortive counselor for many years, and a registered nurse. I was pro-choice at one point in my life, and I'm basically here to encourage you, as the Collier County Commissioners did recently, to just write a, something to say that you support not passing this amendment, saying no to Amendment Four. The Collier County Commissioners, I believe that in, and you can look this up easily online, it was in the news press back in June, basically, their wording said in paragraph four, "I believe the language of the proposed amendment is vague, deceptive, and overbroad, and would strike already enacted protections instituted by the state of Florida by broadening the definition of healthcare providers to those not medically licensed, not medically licensed, eliminating parental consent for minors, and allowing the life of the unborn to be taken right up until the moment of birth." I have seen third trimester abortions. They are barbaric, and if this amendment were to pass, that would be happening in this state. So I respectfully ask for you to follow the lead of the Collier County Commissioners and oppose Amendment Four. Thank you so much.
Up next, Robert Reynolds.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I'm a resident of Estero, only three years now, almost four, Florida. I'm aghast at what is happening here. I'm a private citizen here today, but I am a volunteer sidewalk advocate for life. I've been doing this for 25 years. If you read the resolution against the amendment, Amendment Four, from Collier County, it's very clear, and I'm not going to repeat it, but paragraph four is very relevant and very, very clear. Kathy already addressed it, but I'd just like to make a few comments on my own. I find this amendment is nothing short of evil. It is an abomination to propose this amendment is worthy of the gravitas of our Constitution. Not just our state, any state. Why? It's very unclear, ambiguous, shameful, really, in its presumption that our people will accept such a nebulous statement and make it part of our Constitution. But that unclear, ambiguous, without definition of terms is one thing. Deceit is the critical piece. The reference to Article 10, Section 22, regarding parental notification at our current Constitution, was the only reference made by the amendment in those 34 words. And the point of that was to deceive, knowing full well that if this amendment passes, they will eliminate our current legislation, which supports parental consent in the case of a minor's abortion. So very deceptive in that regard. It's anti-life. So it's anti-family, it's also anti-life. It will lead to abortion through all nine months, and to the let-them-die philosophy that we've seen in our, in our, in our country, in various states, where a survivor of an abortion is left to die. We know it's a human being. Science is very clear. Human life begins at fertilization. And I'm asking you to stand with us and likewise provide a resolution that leads in Florida to what is good, true, and right. Thank you.
I have a card here, I think it's Said. Is there a Said? I can't read it. Maybe I can get some help. Let's call up Jim Cassidy. And next, it will be Ryan Kennedy.
Thank you, Commissioners. May I approach?
No.
These pamphlets?
You can give the staff.
Okay, these pamphlets are from the Concerned Parents of Florida. Okay, the horror of abortion and dealing with minors, okay, is what these pamphlets address. Okay, we're talking going way from a 72-hour consent from parents, written consent, to now a mere phone call. now a mere phone call, where a message could be left on, conceivably left on a recorder, where parents unaware of it don't receive this phone call, and their daughter is undergoing surgery for abortion, our minor daughter, their 15-year-old daughter. This is inconceivable in the state of Florida and in Lee County. We cannot allow this to take place. And you gentlemen have the power to take this away and safeguard our children, our minor children, who have no one else but their parents and men like you to take care of them and to keep them safe. We're going from a healthcare provider, okay, now making the decision whether a young girl's going to have an abortion, not a doctor, a healthcare provider. It's inconceivable that such an amendment would even be approachable to the people of Florida and in Lee County. And we're also going to the point where you're going to have a facility, okay, that doesn't have to be licensed, and you have vital medical concerns, no safeguards for infections, so this young girl can go in there and receive whatever care she's going to get, which is not going to be what we should be giving them. We have to do something about this. What we're going, it's not moving women forward, it's moving them backward. And our minors have to be safeguarded, and it's up to you gentlemen to safeguard them in Lee County. We're talking about what's going if this amendment comes in, we're going to the back street, back alley abortions. That would happen before Reamorow versus Wade, that's what we're going back to if we allow this to take place. And only you gentlemen can safeguard the young minor women in Lee County. And God help us if you don't do it. And thank you very much.
Ryan Kennedy up next. After that, Robert Roper.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Kennedy. I'm a resident here in Lee County, and I'm here today, obviously a lot of people already talked about, to push and urge you to adopt a resolution like Collier County did, to say that as a commission, you do not believe in amendment four. And I'll take this from a different perspective. We've already heard all about amendment four and what it does, what it's going to do to our state. But I'll mention for a second the fact of all the other states that have passed it. The number one thing we're hearing is that those people that voted for it didn't know what it was going to do. They didn't know that it was going to cause late-term abortions, it didn't know to take away their rights as parents. They didn't know. And why is that so important that you, as a commission, adopt a resolution? Because it's telling the residents here in Lee County, this is what's going to happen if it passes. You become the people that are pushing the knowledge for the residents who don't know any better, who don't have the time, who are busy, and may vote uninformed in the booth, the voting booth, and you have that ability to do that. And so I encourage you, just like Collier County did, and they did in a 5-0 decision, to pass a resolution. Thank you.
Up next, Robert Roper, and Janice Nystrom will be followed.
Robert Roper, pastor, First Baptist Church of Alva. The state legislature passed laws, they were vetted, debated, voted on, and signed into law by Governor Ron DeSantis to protect the mothers and the unborn. Some of these legislators are from right here in Lee County. You probably voted for them. They represent you. I ask you to stand with them. Amendment four will immediately invalidate all the work that our legislative representatives have done. If passed, it will enshrine into our Constitution the only law in the state of Florida that does not require parental consent for a minor to have a medical procedure. Current law requires an abortionist to report known or suspected cases of rape, incest, and human trafficking for both minors and adults. Amendment four eliminates those requirements to report. Under the current law, only a physician can administer an abortion. Under amendment four, any healthcare provider may perform an abortion at any point in the pregnancy up to birth. One of the arguments, this is laughable if it wasn't so sad, one of the arguments presented before the Florida Supreme Court by the ACLU attorneys in support of amendment four was that it will increase tourism from more abortion-restrictive states. Why would you adopt this resolution? I'm asking you to adopt a resolution that you have on the table there to draw attention to the deceptive nature and the destructive results of amendment four on Lee County residents. Here's a brief sampling of other resolutions you have passed just this year, whereas gopher tortoises is currently listed as a threatened species, whereas trauma is the leading cause of death for all Floridians, whereas the emphasis in foster care must be on the well-being of the child, whereas Pace Center for Girls believes that all young women are tomorrow's leaders. Please add this whereas, the one that you have on your table. Whereas, the board believes that the passage of amendment four would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Lee County and the state of Florida. Jesus said, "Whosoever shall receive one such little child in my name receiveth me; but whosoever shall offend one of these little ones which believe in me, it were better for him to have a millstone hang around his neck and be drowned in the depths of the sea." Move this resolution off the table and on to the rolls of the other resolutions you have passed, and be the voice of the unborn in Lee County and the state of Florida. It's at least as important as a gopher turtle.
Thank you, sir. Janice Nystrom, Jacqueline Perez is next.
I too will vote no for amendment four and would applaud you passing a resolution to support that you're against that, but I'm here to speak on a different matter, and I have all kinds of documentation with me if anybody is interested. The political situation in this county that you are all involved in is nefarious. Let's connect the dots. Almost 30 elected officials use the same campaign manager, Terry Miller, from TM Strategic Consulting, with the exception of Commissioner Pendergast. That includes all of you and Commissioner Hammond, who's not here today. Based on your contributions, you are aware that he has five political committees that he uses to sabotage his opponents with damaging hit pieces that get sent to hundreds of thousands of people, although the one that I just received for Commissioner Greenwell is quite flattering. Terry Miller's candidate for commissioner is Dave Mulica. Commissioner Greenwell, Ruane, and Sandelli have all endorsed Dave Mulica. You may deny this, but you are also aware that you are supporting a man that has been toxic dumping since 2019 on land and in groundwater. There are 600 pages of documents on the DEP website. In a television interview, Mr. Mulica denied contaminating land and groundwater and used an email from your pollution inspector, Rebecca Alexander, as proof, except it wasn't proof, it was a lie. First, the DEP has to clear Mr. Mulica of charges, not the county. Secondly, Mrs. Alexander had no knowledge that Mulica was using him, using her to clear himself, as she wrote in a response to my public records request. About one-half of the Miller candidates, including Commissioner Ruane and Hammond, have packs of their own, and they give money to Terry Miller and to Terry Miller candidates. So what does all of this mean? That you will all support false hit pieces, will never support a candidate that is not in the Miller club, and you are supporting somebody that has contaminated land and groundwater? And who gets hurt? The children and their families who rely on clean drinking water and uncontaminated soil. Commissioners, you still have time to pull your endorsements and get your contributions returned to you. We want free and fair elections in Lee County. Thank you.
Jacqueline Perez, up next will be Joe Phillips.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today with much concern over a property in my district where I have a vested interest in. On July 11, there was an interview conducted by NBC, Dave Elias, and Dave Mulica, where they claimed that an email by one of your employees from the Pollution Prevention Department, Becky Alexander, showed that this contaminated site was closed. And this is the email that she actually was so upset by, she sent the following day to another employee at the county, Rick Rotabush. She states the NBC interview, and she says, please see the line at the bottom of the article, the statement is not correct. I did not send any emails that stated the site was cleared of debris and the matter closed. So you have individuals that are defaming or claiming inaccurate allegations of your employees, which I think is your responsibility to protect your employees, especially when they're being lied about on TV. Also, I have in my possession the consent order that the DEP has been trying to get Mr. Mulica to sign, and he's been procrastinating. I went to the DEP, I spoke to them. Why am I so concerned? It's my community, it's my district. And on this property that they found, in this consent order that he is procrastinating from signing, it states that a soil and water assessment was performed at the property, which resulted in findings of arsenic, petroleum hydrocarbons, carcinogenic compounds, and lead was found in the soil and in the water, in the groundwater and surface water. And they attached, all the attachments in here on how they want him to clean this property. Soon, it's even more frightening when you're reading this consent order, because the person who actually owns the property is not Dave Mulica, he leased the property. And this person called DEP when they purchased the property, and they wanted to show them. He excavated 19 sites. He went from piece to piece on this property, and everywhere he dug up, he found, and he showed DEP, that there was all kinds of material, toxic hazardous waste solvents, sealants, containers, roll-off paints, propane tanks, piles of metal, waste tires, photovoltaic devices from the site. This is really concerning to me, and I know that, I know all of you care about our environment. Kevin, I know you do. Cecil, I know you. You love Lee County. So if anything, I'm not asking you to pull his endorsement, I'm asking you to have him sign this consent order and clean up this toxic waste site since 2019 that's contaminating our water. Please. It's your responsibility to make people clean up and be responsible and not break the law. You know, this is almost five years and a half that this property is polluted on continuously that leads into Ten Mile Canal, where we have manatees and all kinds of other wildlife we need to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez, up next.
I'm going to enter this into the record, please.
Up next, Joe Phillips. Randy Hegel.
Thank you.
Will be next.
Morning, Commissioners. I am Smokin' Joe. The last time I was here, I asked this board, who is supposed to make decisions based on the best interest of the residents of Lee County, how you could support David Mulica for county commissioner. Not one of you have provided an answer. Instead, you decided to ignore the proof, even after I had the DEP reports displayed on the overhead. Through public records requests, we have uncovered 600 pages of evidence showing that Dave Mulica has illegally dumped toxic waste that will have an effect on our groundwater. In an interview with NBC, Mulica lied and said that he had dumped debris because of Hurricane Ian. However, the DEP has provided documentation that he has habitually been dumping toxic waste since 2019. He stated this had been remedied, but the DEP said that is in fact still an open, ongoing matter. He's a liar. The property was acquired in 2023 by a new owner, and he had an excavator, as Ms. Perez said, and what was buried under the site, 19 random holes, each one were contaminated with toxic waste that would limit the use of this man's property. This begs to question, whose behalf is this board working for? Is it the campaign strategist whom most of you are connected to, or is it the person's Mulica dynasty? It's certainly not the residents. The past weekend, it was evident that even Commissioner Sandelli and Mr. Pendergast felt the need to disparage voters against Matthew Thornton with comments on social media. In truth, the comments about the use of billboards was a direct attack on Amanda Cochran. This gives credence to the speculation that grassroots candidates have no chance in Lee County. I didn't notice any of you condemning Terry Miller for his false accusations, and the Millers sent attacking opposing candidates, which have been proven false, but the damage was already done. We come with evidence, not make-believe. While I am sure that none of you will enlighten us to your decision to support environmental issues posed by Dave Mulica, I will continue to ask for an explanation. I have never addressed this board without the evidence to back my statements. I have posted the evidence on social media, and I'm more than willing to share it with each and every one of you. We deserve to know who we are paying you to work for. It's certainly not our community at large. Lee County has become the cronyism and cover-up capital of Florida. It's a shame, fellas, and you need to get your moral compasses in line, you're skewed.
Have a great day. Up next, Randy Hegel. I may be saying that name wrong, so please come on up. And Scott Baer will be next. Scott Baer?
Baer.
Baer, okay. Thanks, Scott. Sorry for the mispronunciation of your name.
No worries. Brett Baer gets it wrong. Good morning. So thank you, Commissioners, for being here today. I am a Florida Lee County resident, but I also represent the largest and oldest network of pregnancy resource centers in the state of Florida. And in my work on the front lines of the pro-life movement, helping women, I see women being victimized all the time. So abortion, we already know from anecdotal and metadata, shows that high rates of breast cancer, high rates of complications with future pregnancies, all sorts of complications. Amendment four would not only continue that, it would remove all laws, because the first two words, a lot of ambiguities in the amendment, not those first two words, no law. That means for the next 15 to 20 years, we'll have courts deciding things like, that are duly-elected officials brought into place, like a 24-hour waiting period, right? We want to give women a chance to think about. 85% of women will say that if they had more emotional or financial support, they would have chosen life. So let's not rush them, let's slow them down. 24-hour waiting period does that. How about the mandatory requirement right now to show the ultrasound? That's a law right now that would be in jeopardy. Of course, the big one that was already mentioned, parental consent. I do not want my daughter, as a minor, I don't want to get a text message telling me that my daughter had the abortion after the fact, right? So parental notification is huge. I'm looking at four men here, though, and you might not know this, but Chief Justice Munoz, when he spoke, when this was being debated at the Florida state judicial level, whether the language was too mandatory, what he said was, this is a wolf in wolf's clothing? Floridians are not dumb, they will figure this out. I'm going to ask you to help educate, I'm here to educate people, I would ask you to help educate Floridians, the terrible effects that this amendment will put into place. It was already mentioned as well that Florida will become an abortion destination state. It'll be the abortion capital. What does that look like? Albuquerque, New Mexico. Talk to the hotel industry there. Women go across the state of Florida, from Texas over to New Mexico, take the abortion pill, which all this great talk about clean water, where do we think the chemical abortion pills go? Where do the aborted babies go? It goes into our water system. So if you're against, if you're for clean water, be against this amendment. But back to Chief Justice Munoz, it was four men who voted for that amendment to keep it on the ballot, and he admitted there was ambiguous language. So we have to educate people about the ambiguous language. I would say we have God on our side, we have science on our side, we've got truth on our side. I would ask you to be on the baby's and mother's side. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Schelmer, next.
I think that she told that she's outside.
Okay, we'll...
If we could just put her aside.
Okay, yeah. Lori Hepner?
I'm Linda.
Okay, come on, Linda.
Thank you.
Linda Schelmer.
Hi. Good morning, gentlemen. I've been coming here for months, as I'm sure you're maybe familiar or not, standing here, giving you accurate and very verifiable information about the shortcomings of LCDS and the inability of the director, it seems, to keep the animals safe and cared for. As I have sat here and told you, told you horror stories of these poor animals, you don't even seem to flinch some days, and you appear to look right through me. You, as voted-in Commissioners, have a responsibility to us taxpayers to oversee that slaughterhouse and look into our concerns, yet you don't. So often, after being fully informed of only just a few issues and not stepping up and making change, you are becoming just as responsible for the deaths of these animals as Lee County Animal Domestic Services. Yes, Commissioners, are you aware that they don't have a policy and procedure to evaluate animals? So when an animal comes in on a stray hold, three to five days, they have no policy and procedure and set to evaluate these animals as to whether they're adoptable, whether they go to rescue, or whether they're killed? There is nothing in place. There is no accountability. The janitor, for God's sake, could be doing these evaluations. It's unacceptable. I have asked repeatedly, and I finally got an answer, that there is none. That is absolutely reprehensible. no accountability. The janitor, for God's sake, could be doing these evaluations. It's unacceptable. I have asked repeatedly, and I finally got an answer, that there is none. That is absolutely reprehensible. It's in place in every shelter in this United States, and we do not have one. And given that this is the most important evaluation, it requires protocol and training of which nobody gets. This results in unnecessary euthanization of animals. It results in dogs that should not maybe go to adopters be sent to adopters. There's many sides to this, that this could not be good for anybody. And it puts a high burden on the rescues. Yes, Commissioners, this is one more shortcoming of LCDS that you need to investigate. The way I see it, and how the public should and will see it, is you guys need to step up and do your job and look into this. Every day, you do nothing. Every minute, you do nothing. Every second, you guys do nothing. Animals are dying. They're being held in cages twenty-three hours a day with no ability to get out. Animals are suffering from lack of medical care. They're being left in garages and sheds, suffering. Animals are being returned to neglectful owners without vet care. Backyard breeders are just having a grand old time out there. They can do whatever they want. Animals are running the streets. They're being hit by cars. You need to do something, guys. That's really, I mean, we can give you any kind of help we can with the information as to what to really focus on, but you need, we need your help. Please do your job.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next, Lori Hepner. At the mic. Please don't touch the mic. It's all set. Yes, ma'am. You're all set.
Thank you. Thank you very much for giving me the chance to, okay, thank you for hearing me out. Do you ever feel like you've tried your darndest to accomplish something extremely important and no avail? Like you poured your heart and soul over and over again, and you gave it your all to no avail? To just feel like sometimes you're beating your head against the wall because you're not getting, getting the answers that you're getting through to anybody to listen to you. You go to bed at night thinking about how you can make a difference. Wake up in the morning thinking about how you can make a difference, and yet, no one will help you. We have sent many emails, letters, phone calls, and all we're asking for is a meeting. The worst and saddest part about the whole situation is that every single day, we don't get help. A cat is being euthanized. A dog is being euthanized. And not just one. Lee County alone, DAS, averages five to seven animals per day. And, and they take, and did you know, Commissioners, that if you lose a cat and it's not microchipped, they don't even have a one-day stray hold? Not one. So if you lose your cat and it doesn't have a microchip, you will never see it again if it's picked up by Lee County. They take in almost, over ten thousand animals a year and euthanize almost thirty percent. Lee County is always short on, short of volunteers, and it's no wonder because they're a high-kill shelter. I've heard many other facilities that tell their volunteers to stay home because they're overloaded with volunteers, and yet, Lee County is always shorthanded. Same with the rescues and the fosters. Many fosters that used to be partners with Lee County DAS have left because of the way they're treated. Why aren't there longer volunteer hours and seven days a week? And, and the DAS closes at three-thirty in the afternoon? Why can't this, there be a second evening shift so that these dogs and cats can get more time as they're usually left in their cages? We need to have more visiting hours.
Lori, yeah, your paper's hitting the mic, so it's hard to hear you. You're fine. Keep going. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you. I'll give you some more time since I stopped you, okay?
Okay, thank you. And it's the only one in the entire county that closes at three-thirty in the afternoon. Why can't there be a second evening shift so that those dogs and cats can get out one more time as they're usually left in their kennels? And, and also, we need to, we need longer hours and to make more availability to the public and have it open seven days a week. Our overnight care as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
De'Annie Jane, if I'm gonna say that wrong, I'm sure, please correct me when you get up here.
Jeannie Jane.
Okay.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. If you spend any time on social media, you have surely noticed the astronomical number of lost or stray dog posts every single day. Granted, we have a lot of irresponsible pet owners here, but the out-of-control breeding of dogs and cats has got to be stopped. We can't keep killing. It's not working. Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result is insanity. We have approximately two hundred and four thousand additional residents in Lee County since the shelter was expanded in 2011. More people equals more cats, dogs, et cetera. Additional shelter space and staff is desperately needed. Please prioritize additional funding for domestic animal services in the upcoming 2024, 2025 county budget. Our requests for simple changes at the shelter remain the same. Here are a few. Additional hours for the working public to adopt dogs. This can easily be done by adjusting the hours to include more early evening hours. Extending hours for volunteers during the normal working hours of the shelter staff. This in turn would equate to more outside time for the dogs. We have submitted evidence to all of you that the dogs are lucky if they get out even once a day. Perhaps the paid staff for that purpose, paid staff can help take dogs out for potty breaks when they are free. Or hire staff for that purpose, being it's difficult to find people who want to work at a kill shelter. Cats seem to be getting a bad rap in Lee County. No hold for cats without ID needs to be changed to three days, the same as dogs. Free or low-cost spay neuter for all residents is needed, not just for those on government assistance. This can be accomplished by recruiting veterinarians to donate a little of their time and possibly the use of their facility for the program. We are willing to help you with that. The majority of what we are asking for can be done without any additional expense to the county. The control is in your hands. Please consider a revision to Ordinance fourteen-dish-twenty-two to address the overpopulation of dogs and cats. We are not giving up. We are not going away until no adoptable animal is killed in Lee County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next is Joe Ryan, and after that will be Dr. Edward Grass. Sir Joe Ryan, coming. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joe Ryan. I serve as the System Director for Lee Health Coconut Point in Southern Lee County, and I'd like to talk to you today about Lee Health's potential conversion. What we want to do is build a healthcare system that revolves around the patient and the patient's needs and to deliver care where care is needed. If we continue as a governmental system, we will continue to be constrained by the county lines, limiting our ability to serve the patients who need quality care. We are and continue to be the primary hospital system operating in Lee County for as long as any of us can see into the future. And competing as a governmental system has distinct disadvantages for Lee Health. These disadvantages are apparent even today. They're not theory, and they're apparent near the borders of Lee County. Competitors can and have taken steps to export healthcare outside of the Lee County borders for our residents. And in our current structure, we are unable to respond to that, creating a competitive disadvantage for Lee Health. Specifically, in Southern Lee County, near Lee Health Coconut Point, where I'm positioned, a competitor based in Collier County opened a freestanding emergency room across the street from Lee Health Coconut Point. Ten to twenty percent of patients seeking care at a freestanding emergency room will go on to require a hospital admission. And a high majority of patients seeking care at health systems based outside of Lee County are being transferred outside of Lee County for that healthcare. And you can see now how Lee County stands to suffer economically from having its healthcare exported outside the borders. Not only is Lee Health unable to create a footprint outside of Lee County, in current state, Lee Health is unable to respond to competitors pulling business outside of the county borders. It's not just Southern Lee County. A national hospital chain also owns a freestanding emergency room in Northern Cape Coral and frequently exports care outside of the county borders. We believe that Lee Health offers the best healthcare and the best hospital care in our area, and we will continue to be headquartered and locally led in Lee County in perpetuity. All we need to ensure the continued success for residents here is to compete on a level playing field with the same rules as the new entrants to our market have. Converting to a community-focused nonprofit health system will help position Lee Health as a nimble, flexible, cutting-edge health system, ensuring our mission as a safety net remains intact for Lee County residents for years to come. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Dr. Edward Grass. After that will be Ryan Kennedy.
Are you ready?
Got it, went? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Edward Grass, M.D., for the record. I come before you today to petition you as a body to complete a resolution condemning Amendment Four. I previously, previously sent each of you a copy of the Collier County B O C C resolution in PDF formed by official channels. That body, as you recall, voted five-zero to condemn Amendment Four. I've practiced medicine for forty-five years here in Lee County. I can attest firsthand to the brutal, savage nature of the abortion process, although I never performed or supported such procedures. I was sickened to see body parts of babies disposed of in operating room waste cans as pieces of trash. This act is murder, and it's sinful, and it should never be condoned. As you know, a constitutional amendment is practically irrevocable and supersedes any future action by the legislature. The amendment petition was falsely promoted as a positive women's health issue. It will permit anyone licensed to provide healthcare to make a decision on a woman's need for abortion, including massage therapists and tattoo artists. Allowing abortion to thrive in Florida will increase the flow of human sex trafficking, as traffickers need to have ready access to abortion for their sex slaves. This will degrade both the quality of life in Florida and the morals of all Florida citizens. At the next B O C C meeting, please place this item on the agenda and then follow, follow Collier County's example and draft a resolution condemning Amendment Four. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna ask for us to take a, just a short ten-minute break, restroom break. We'll come right back. So at this time, I'd like to pause the meeting for ten minutes, and we'll come right back. Okay? If we could, everybody, please have your seat. Let's get started back.
It's a boat coming.
I too.
Huh?
Good for you.
You gotta show me a picture.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene as Board of County Commissioners, and we'll get back to our cards. Before I get back to the cards, I'd just like to say, we, this was a special meeting that we called because we're, we have a workshop today, and we're supposed to have been there at nine forty-five this morning. So we're trying to give everybody an opportunity to speak, but just be aware that we are trying to get through this because we have a workshop that we need to, to deal with today. But give everybody an opportunity to speak. I would also, will mention the fact on Amendment Four, as the chairman, there will be no action today, but we, we have an opportunity to look at this, and I, and I promise you, as the chairman, I will bring this back up in the near future. We were just unprepared to do that today, being this special meeting. So don't be upset that we don't take action today. It's something, as a chairman, that I am going to really look into and bring back up in the future very shortly. Okay? All right. I will start with, I'm sorry on the writing on some of this, y'all, so please, I think it's Diana Spears?
Yes.
Okay, come on. If I pronounce it wrong, ma'am, please correct me, or anyone else, if I pronounce it wrong, please correct me.
I just got a sand in my mouth.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. My name is Diane Spears. I am a nursing director at Lee Health. I have been there since 1972, and meaning that I've been working there over fifty years. But what's much, it must, much more important to me is that I'm a citizen in the Dunbar community, and I've been there longer than I've been at Lee Health. Both. Lee and my community I'm committed to and love. I am a huge advocate of my community, and I take an active role in many of the outreach opportunities on behalf of Lee Health, including Babashot Wellness Program, where we offer free health screening on the first Saturday of every month. Over my tenure as a nurse, I have seen the importance of ensuring that quality care is accessible for everyone. And for Lee Health, its desire to preserve its safety net mission in perpetuity is critical, not just for the Dunbar community, but all of Lee County, as well as the beyond the county borders. I trust Lee Health, obviously, because I've been there that long. I trust Lee Health. When they say they are maintaining the safety net mission is a top priority. Many years ago, when Jim Nathan was the president and CEO, three of us nurses, African-American nurses, we went to Jim and said, Jim, Lee Health, Lee needs to do more to reach the community in Dunbar. And he was on board. And since that time, on the gym and Dr. Lara Antinucci, I have seen that commitment grow and expand. I attended the presentation that Lee Health presented at the request of the Minister of Alliance, wealth of information. And after that, I've taken the time myself to truly understand what does that conversion mean to me, my community, Lee County. And after giving it a lot of thought and a lot of research, it is a win-win. It is a win for Lee Health, and it's a win for our community. So as I stand here today, I'm not standing here on emotion. I'm not standing here on the feeling. I'm not standing here on hearsay. I'm standing here on reality of life at this time. And I'm asking you guys, I'm asking the Commissioners, to please vote in favor of the conversion process to move forward so that Lee Health can continue to provide high-quality care to all those who need it, regardless of their ability to pay. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Up next will be, I believe it's Charlie DeFeo, and after that will be Dominic Camarada.
Thank you. Praise be Jesus Christ forever, and thank you for leading us in prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. I'm a private citizen, Fort Myers, and I also oppose to Amendment Four. Thank, everybody said everything. It's nothing fair repeating for, for all the actions. But I also believe Amendment Four and Three are kind of tied together diabolically, and both should be shot down, but I want to focus on Amendment Four. It was brought to our attention that in the abortion states, the hotel industry are changing mattresses up to once a week, because the women who are having abortions are coming, that are being brought to the hotels, and they're hemorrhaging on the beds. We just, I mean, you have to think about this. The man came up several times about human sex trafficking and the pimps. You're gonna bring an element to the state. I mean, I'm opposed, I believe life begins at the first moment of conception, but for those who don't, you're gonna bring an element here. So yes, I'm asking you to please vote, have a resolution similar to Collier County. Our governor has also publicly, he's opposition to Amendment Four and Three. So that's, that's it. Thank you. God bless you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Dominic up next, and then German Hernandez Jr. will be next.
Good morning. My name is Dominic Camerata, and I serve as co-owner and chief financial officer of my family's business, Camerata Companies. We're a land development company that has delivered over five thousand home sites so far in Lee County with plans to deliver over eleven thousand more in the coming years. I have previously communicated with you our opinion that Lee Health is one of our community's most valuable assets, that it's exceptionally well-run, and that we need to support the incredible leadership team that recommends that this conversion is in the best interest of Lee County's residents. We believe in fair and open competition, a conservative value. This would accomplish that by allowing Lee Health to fairly compete with other health systems entering the area. We believe in smaller government, streamlining operations and reducing red tape, another conservative value. Moving Lee Health to a community-based nonprofit eliminates a government entity and will allow for more flexibility and adaptability in the healthcare marketplace. We believe in low taxes, another conservative value. While Lee Health has never received any taxes from Lee County residents, this move will prevent them from ever doing so. We believe that having local residents running local businesses provides the best returns for our neighbors. Lee Health cares about their patients because they, because they are, because they are their neighbors, and their friends and their families as well. Maintaining local control is paramount, and this conversion makes this possible. We believe in thinking bigger and better, allowing Lee Health to grow and expand can bring us new specialists, improve recruiting, increase services, and keep more people closer to home for their healthcare needs. We believe that the proposed mission statement is a fair proposal, and it ensures that Lee Health continues to provide its safety net mission in perpetuity. The proposed mission agreement is fair to Lee County, fair to Lee Health, and fair to the citizens of Lee County. We encourage you to do everything possible to make this conversion process, make this conversion possible, as we believe in the, that we believe it is in the best interest of the citizens to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is German Hernandez Jr. I want to start by reading Proverbs thirty-one verses eight through nine, says, "Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are destitute. Open your mouth, judge righteously, defend the rights of the poor and needy." As a citizen of Lee County and the great state of Florida, the vagueness of this amendment is disturbing, as well as the numerous consequences and repercussions that will come along with it. The liberal group that started this campaign has refused to provide any definitions for key terms, viability being one of these undefined terms. As has correctly been pointed out by Attorney General Moody, viability means various things to different people. Due to the vagueness surrounding this critical term, it would open a door for abortions up to full term in our state. The amendment also fails to define what a healthcare provider is, which, under Florida law, isn't limited to medical doctors, but ranges from optometrists, chiropractors, physical trainers, acupuncturists, et ceteras. This would essentially allow for a larger rate of healthcare providers to decide whether baby is viable physically or mentally, in order to authorize late-term abortion. This amendment also repeals current parental consent laws established in Florida. Unlike every other medical procedure, which requires parental consent, this amendment would allow minors to have abortions by merely informing the parent that the abortion took place after the fact. There's an egregious overstep of parental rights and is written in a manner that could perceivably, that could deceive someone into thinking that parents remain involved. And, at the same time, this amendment will have severe consequences for our children, both born and unborn, if it passes. To summarize it, it will allow full-term abortion approved by an undefined healthcare provider for not just adults, but minors without the consent of a parent in Florida. Voters deserve to know this, and the amendment summary refuses to tell them. We must align ourselves with the right side of history on this issue. I am exhoring you Commissioners to speak out against the amendment and humbly asking that, as Collier County spoke out and condemned this abhorrent amendment, that you Commissioner would bring the attached resolution to the floor and would likewise follow suit by standing up and condemning this deceptively wicked amendment. And the fact that we're having this conversation is saddening. We all know an unborn is a person, and the fact is that we're still taking this long to having a resolution signed off by you men, says a lot of where we are as a country, as Nassau County. Please, let the citizens of Lee County know that you guys are against Amendment Four, or not God's judgment will be coming to Lee County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bethany Gardner, and after that will be Eric Appelgren.
My name is Bethany Franco Gardner, and I'm here to ask that you adopt the resolution to publicly condemn Amendment Four. As a Hispanic woman, I find it appalling that the groups behind this amendment have spent millions of dollars into convincing the Hispanic community that this amendment is trying to prevent government overreach in personal healthcare, when in fact, this amendment would open the door for Hispanic babies to be murdered all the way up to full term, and would remove the need for parental consent to have an abortion. As someone whose family fled Cuba because of the Marxist regime that put no value on human life, it is terrifying to see those same communist ideologies being pushed here in the United States, and to see Planned Parenthood specifically targeting minority groups. Historically, Planned Parenthood tries actively to target African-Americans, Hispanics, Asians, anyone who is not white. The Bible is clear in Proverbs six that God hates hands that shed innocent blood, but it also is clear in Leviticus twenty that he holds the people of the land who turn a blind eye equally as responsible. As our elected officials, I urge you to defend the sanctity of human life from the moment of conception and stand up against this wicked and immoral amendment. We cannot sit by and allow this evil to be perpetrated in our state, and it is your duty, as God's appointed tools, to listen to the citizens of Lee County and speak out against this amendment, and do all in your power to ensure that it is struck down. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Eric, okay, and after that will be...
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Dr. Eric Appelgren. I'm a proud veteran, a board-certified anesthesiologist, and a healthcare executive with an MBA in Health Administration. I happen to also be married to a wonderful anesthesiologist who practices in private practice in Lee County. We have, and most importantly, I proudly serve our community as the chief physician executive at Health Park Medical Center. As physicians, my wife and I have focused our professional and personal lives in the service to others. We came to Lee County seven years and joined this community, and joined Lee Health in the service of our community and our neighbors. One such example to the mission of Lee Health is at Health Park Medical Center, where we deliver over sixty-two hundred babies annually, essentially one full kindergarten class every day. These families that come for care come from across the region, the babies where they are treated, to have babies where they are treated by expert staff, regardless of their ability to pay, and co-located with the only children's hospital in the region. The overwhelming majority of these deliveries are under or unfunded relative to the cost of care. We provide these services to these moms and babies regardless of their address or socioeconomic status. It is the important work of a health system with local control and community commitment. Converting to a community-focused nonprofit entity would ensure our ability to continue to provide these and many other under or unfunded services to our community. As a healthcare executive and physician, I've thoughtfully considered the impacts of conversion may have on our health system and the mission that's so important. While the day-to-day operations for our physicians and frontline workers would remain virtually unchanged, we would gain the ability to pursue new alignment models, such as clinically-integrated networks and expansion of services. Conversion would give physicians the opportunity to innovate and invest in specialty provider joint ventures and deeper partnerships with the health system. This will accelerate recruitment of physicians and the subspecialties we need by having economic opportunities in our community, which mirror the economic opportunities that exist in other areas of the country and our strong incentives to relocation. Most importantly, it ensures the improvement in quality of healthcare delivered in Lee County and growth in area that supports the delivery of on or unfunded care. Any delays to conversion will put Lee Health in a weaker position in the future due to new entrance into the market and will, and not allow us to compete on a level playing field. We really appreciate the work that you and your staff are doing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yvonne Gardner, and Jerry DeLeo?
Close, close. Housework.
Yeah, it's close.
DeLeo, will you help me out when you come up? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this, your time this morning. It's Aaron Gardner.
I got it. It looked like a V, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I got chicken scratch. My name is Aaron Gardner, and I'm a proud citizen of Lee County. I would first like to state first and foremost that our church prays for you men every week and lift you up, and that he grants you wisdom in your job to lead this great county. With that said, I come here this morning, like others, asking that you use your position of authority to speak out against this wicked Amendment Four. We ask that you hear the cries of Lee County citizens that have, that you represent, who have called your office, sent you letters, emails, and a small fraction of who stand before you today, as we speak against this amendment that harms our children, strips our rights, our parental rights, steals the duly-elected power of our legislature, all because liberal interest groups come, some of which are not even located in our state, put enormous amounts of money to push their Marxist agenda here in Florida. I have heard that we have seen no progress on this resolution that we have been asking for, for three weeks, because there's question of legality. If this is true, I'd like to know what is the legal issue that we are concerned of a resolution that condemns a wicked and deceptive amendment, and why have we seen no issues in Collier County, who passed this over a month ago? Commissioners, we must be on the right side of history. I am sitting here, now you may be sitting telling yourself, "Well, this isn't my responsibility." I have two points I would like to make. One, our nation was founded on the principle of lesser magistrate standing up to the abuse of higher powers. Two, just as we recognize today that it was the duty of every citizen, mayor, county commissioner, senator, congressman, and president to speak out on the evil of slavery in its day, it is the duty of all of us to speak out of this injustice in ours. Our former president, John Quincy Adams, who spent twenty-six years of his political career fighting towards abolition of slavery, at the end of his career was asked by a reporter if he regretted wasting time fighting against slavery. His response, "Duty is ours, results are God's." I'm imploring you this morning to hear those wise words of our president and not find yourself distracted with worrying about those who would push against you fulfilling your duty. I especially plead with you men who've claimed to follow Christ, sitting there now, that you would trust God to bring fruits of your labors, and that you would be a voice for the voiceless, trusting that the Lord knows what he's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, come on up and correct me.
DeLeo.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I can say Greenwell, you can't say DeLeo?
Y'all, no, sorry. But I appreciate you getting mine wrong.
All right. Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Jerry DeLeo. I am the Men's Director at Verity Pregnancy and Medical Resource Center in Fort Myers. Some folks might be upset with me standing here because there is a man who's speaking on women issues. The specifics are what makes this me standing here controversial. There is a man speaking on women issues. No one would have an issue if I said there is a person speaking on people issues. The specifics in our language give meaning to our conversations. Amendment Four, much like many abortion laws, lacks specifics in an attempt to suppress truth and not confront the reality that in America, right now, the most dangerous place for a child is its mother's womb. This is specifically true with the use of the word viable, a word that I became too familiar with two months ago when my wife and I found out that we lost our child. The pregnancy was no longer viable. There was no heartbeat. My child was dead. Is that what Amendment Four means by viable? That there's no heartbeat? That there's no brain function? That there's no development? Is that what viable means? Is that what they're trying to say? As a husband, this amendment is not viable. Any law that prohibits my ability to protect my wife from harming herself is not viable, and this nonsense of her body, her choice, fails to acknowledge that if the man made a responsible choice, she wouldn't have to mutilate her body. These laws and these narratives have emasculated and enabled men to be irresponsible. As a father, this law is not viable. Any law that doesn't consider my child's heartbeat as viable is a disgrace. Laws and amendments like these tell our children that they don't matter from the womb to the tomb, and then we're wondering why they're killing each other. We wonder why TikTok has become a platform for murder, because we don't value them from the womb to the tomb. I will close with specifics. Dear Dad, dear Mom, if you have made the choice to kill your child at some point, due to whatever circumstances in your life, do not carry that burden alone. There are places like Verity and other ministries that want to carry this burden with you. Our Lord is gracious and kind and merciful, and he forgives, and he redeems, and he restores. Do not allow these, this narrative to trivialize and minimize your pain. Let us walk with you. And to the lawmakers and those who categorize our children as unviable, let me be very specific, repent, because soon enough, you're going to find out how viable the Lord's justice really is.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Debbie Healy. Joyce Campana will be next.
Good morning. You guys are warriors. Thank you for being here. I'm Debbie Healy. I'm a Lee County resident, just like a lot of these nice people who are here, and you, sir. I want to thank you for putting that uniform on every day, walking out your door, not knowing what's going to happen to you, so I thank you. I'm here specifically about the resolution itself. Chairman Greenwell, I've got confirmation from your office that you have had this resolution for over three weeks, and I'm asking you all, just like with the county, the Collier County Commissioners did, it is verbatim, what Collier County did is just specific to Lee County. And I want to read the last sentence of the resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of County Commissioners expresses its strong opposition to Amendment Four. I'm asking you all, as leaders in this county, to consider this resolution, take a stand, take a stand for life, for what we know what is true and right. And all these people who talked about this, this disgusting amendment, this constitutional amendment, we're asking you to stand against that and stand for life. So I please, I'm going to leave this with you all as a hard copy, but I know you all have the PDF of it, so thank you.
All right. Joyce, come on in.
Thank you. Joyce Campana. I'm working off of the July thirtieth agenda that is on leegov.com. It's got two areas that I think I'm appropriately discussing, the proposed budget development, one being, I think this is the last, the most recent meeting since you discussed the budget development, FY twenty-four, twenty-five, and I just had a couple of questions regarding that, that can maybe be highlighted during the public hearing or on the website. When this was initially drafted, I believe there was a five percent salary increase in the numbers, and I think it came out to just under ten million dollars at five percent. And during your workshop, I believe it was requested that the numbers be reworked for a six percent pay increase, if I'm correct? And I was just wondering what the cost difference was or is between the five percent pay increase and the six percent pay increase. Six percent seems a little steep, but so be it. My other question regarding this development document, and maybe it's more clear in the final draft of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, I didn't see any specific lines for health insurance or benefits or anything like that, and I might have missed it because the print's kind of small and whatever, I'm not totally familiar with it, but I was just curious, everybody, practically, private and public sectors, are concerned about the rising care and, the rising cost in healthcare for their employees. I didn't hear anything about that during this budget development, and I'm just curious how we're getting off the hook. I mean, I hope they're not rising, but they very well may be, and I think that needs to be addressed also in conjunction with, do the healthcare benefits and other benefits to employees go up even more if the percent pay increase is higher? Is there any relationship between those two items in the budget? And I thank you for your time.
Joshua Cracken?
Crackow.
Yes, sir. Up next, after that, will be Julie Millen.
Okay. My name is Joshua Crackow. I'm the chair of our Lee County Libertarian Party. I'm the candidate for State House, District Seventy-seven. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the State House, or as a candidate. I would like to ask, why would you block a constituent from your Facebook I would like to ask, why would you block a constituent from your Facebook page who has concerns about their community? And I think that that is very harmful for the community to be able to have a conversation with their elected officials. I think that that is very wrong, and I think that it's a violation of the First Amendment. David Mulca also has done this. I think that we need to get rid of a lot of these corrupt politicians in this office, and we need to start holding our political candidates accountable. We, you guys should be a disgrace. I have lived in Lee County for my entire life, and it is very sad how you guys have treated our citizens and wasted our tax money. This is a national debt clock. I understand that you guys are not spending that money in Washington, but you guys are misappropriating that money. It is not your money to spend, and you need to be more frugal with that money. And as a representative, I plan to hold our state accountable. We need better elected officials. I endorse Matthew Thornton, Amanda Cochran. I think that we need more physically conservative representatives, so that way when I do get elected in State House, we make sure that the money that I procure from the state gets spent in this county more effectively. I also would like to speak against Amendment Four. I think that we should not, we need to redefine the definitions of an abortion, whether or not, whether it is, if a woman gets assaulted, it should not be considered, or it should be considered a medical malpractice if she gets assaulted and she loses a child. Otherwise, an abortion should be considered illegal and a murder, just like an assault. I also want to speak against the divestment of Lee Memorial. I think that it makes the most vulnerable citizens in our county most susceptible. As Lee Memorial is going to be turning the hospital into a office building, it does not incentivize them to replace a hospital in this area because at the end of the day, our medical system is set up on popsicle sticks with the right to care. So ultimately, it encourages nonprofit and individual hospitals from divesting in areas that do not provide the resources to take care of their budgets. And we need to make sure that all citizens in Lee County are able to get medical care, not just ones in higher socioeconomic areas. Thank you.
I'd also like to say that I think it's kind of disgusting, in my opinion, that you would do a political campaign at a Board of County Commission meetings. Have a nice day.
Yes, sir.
Up next will be Daniel, Daniel Diaz. Is that wrong?
I'm Julie Millam.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped you. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Julie Millam, and I'm here to testify on my own behalf today, and I'm a resident of Lee County. I'm here in opposition of the proposed Amendment Four. This poorly written proposal comes with many, many unintended consequences for women, the child, and the parents of the person who wants to have an abortion. Additionally, I would like to bring to light some effort, bring to light the effort to make late-term abortion on demand legal. I am very passionate about this subject, and I'd like to explain why. If I was born 20 years later, I probably would have been an abortion. My father was a married man, and my mother was his secretary. So more than likely, I would be the poster child for abortion. But in 1962, thankfully, abortion was rare. Due to the grace of God, my mother's, my mother's decision to not have an abortion, I'm standing here today. I would like to think that I have added something to society. See, when you abort a child, you also abort their generations. I have children and also have four grandchildren, three of whom aspire to be doctors like their father, and who knows? Maybe one of them will find a cure for cancer. I was adopted by a good family who could not, at the time, conceive their own children. Many millions of families are waiting years to adopt and would take any child that was available to them, and they're only hindered by lack of available children or the financial means to adopt at all. Due to the lack of clarity of this poorly written amendment, this could endanger babies throughout the entire pregnancy, and they would be succumbed to the partial birth abortion or late-term abortion. And we all know the reason behind partial birth abortion. Let me just be clear. In 1996, Mark Crutcher of Life Dynamics published a 320-page exposé of the practice of partial birth abortion. This book entitled Lime Five is a terrible account by eyewitness healthcare workers of what really goes on in some of the largest abortion clinics around the country. Each case is detailed and grossly depicted. It is the hardest read you will ever read. You'll be changed by the account of what really happens behind the closed doors of abortion mills. Babies would often slip out prematurely, and accounts were given that babies had their chests caught up when they were alive. Some were drowned, and others were twisted apart, breaking bones and decapitated. Baby parts were then sold on the open market, generating billions of dollars of profit. The closer the term abortion, the more developed the organs become, and this was a cash cow for them. Men used with brains for 19, or $995, and others' parts with prices attached. Minors were alerted and promised that they will never think about their abortion again, only to experience horrific procedures that could be barbaric, scarring them for life, even resulting in death. Not to mention the emotional pain and trauma that never leaves them. They are victims as well. Another point was the physician's.
Your three minutes is up. We give three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'm asking you to vote no on this horrific amendment because you are.
Thank you, ma'am.
You are, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Up next will be Mr. Diaz.
Good morning, good morning. English is not my first language, so I have polarities in defense. Plus also, the Amendment Four kind of touched me a little bit here and there, so if I cry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I just want to talk on three points about the Amendment Four, the one that allows abortion through all 40 weeks. I strongly oppose Amendment Four because it permits abortion throughout all 40 weeks of the pregnancy. This raises serious concerns about the values we place on human life as a society. We should prioritize protecting and preserving life, especially when it's partially developed and depending on its mother for survival. Let's work together to find alternative solutions that support both the mother and the unborn child. On the point number two, Amendment Four, remove parental consent for minors. Removing parental consent for minors is a grave mistake. As parents, we are responsible for our children's well-being and, and safety until they reach adulthood, adulthood, right? Minors cannot make life-altering decisions like getting married, joining the military, or dropping out of school without parental consent. So it's contradictory to allow them to make a permanent and potential, potentially harmful decision like abortion without our involvement and guidance. And the point number three, Amendment Four does require, does not require a doctor for abortion. While I personally again believe abortion should not be legal, I understand that some argue it's necessary for the safety of the woman. However, if that is the, the issue and there's no other option, it's crucial to ensure it's done safely and by a medical professional. Amendment Four's lack of requirement for a doctor involvement is alarming and puts women's life at risk. So let's prioritize safety and well-being in this sensitive matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Derek Felder.
Good morning. I'll be brief. I did go to many of the meetings regarding the Lee Health Conversion Plan. The one where the Kaufman Hall did their presentation advocating on the reasons why they need to do this. Many of the reasons all make sense. They need to be able to operate as a business behind, you know, closed doors and have their meetings be able to, you know, run a business properly without having the public know the exact plans on what they're going to do. Like, you know, if you have your competitors sitting in on your meetings, it kind of gives you, you lose your competitive edge there. So I am for the conversion, and they have stated that it's not for sale and everything else, and you guys will still have a oversight committee onto Lee Health, so how it's going to be run and all, everything like that. There will be some kind of county oversight regarding it. Yeah.
Thanks, Derek. Up next, Marsha Ellis. You on, you good on?
Well, you, you have everything, every subject, so.
Oh, you got all the subjects in? I'll give you three more minutes. How's that?
Thank you so much. I do appreciate that. Thank you, Marsha Ellis, for the record. I appreciate this forum so much and the folk, and folks that are coming forward to share their viewpoints on important matters. I also appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit about what I see as the purview of, of this body and these chambers. I, I view these chambers as being the way that our county is governed. I think that there are important jobs that all of you do, and there are important jobs that the county does at your direction. First and foremost, that is to protect life, health, safety, and the quality of life of existing residents, and that's a big ticket. That takes everyone's cooperative and consistent effort over time. And I think that doing that job is the first job that we do. And being conscious of, of how division in a community on topics that are outside of the purview stand in the way of being able to accomplish that primary job, which is to protect life, health, safety, and quality of life. I was happy to learn at the 10-minute break that, that you're not moving on this resolution because I think that there are other viewpoints and perspectives that folks would like to bring forward in these chambers before you consider it, and I very much respect and appreciate that because I believe that you're only hearing one side of a divisive topic, and I look forward to having the opportunity in the future to be able to present the other side of, of what is a divisive topic, or urge you to focus on what your primary responsibility is, which is the government governing Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, there were a few cards that maybe got mixed up, so I want to give everyone an opportunity. If you would like to speak, raise your hand, come on up. You'll be next, okay?
Thank you.
State your name, please, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Ray Cordenoy. I'm an internal medicine physician in private practice. It's interesting to note that you missed my card because I got treated similarly at the board meeting when they voted in favor of this project that you're about to go looking to.
I apologize for missing your card, but I gave you the opportunity to speak, right?
So I've been writing about this topic on my personal Substack, Dr. Cordenoy. I've submitted one of my posts to the Commissioners through an email, and I've been covering this topic, and I guess to go back, I've had 30 years practicing here, so I have a lot of institutional memory, and I've listened to everybody speaking in favor, and I have privileges at all the hospital locations, so I very much know the hospital system. I know the players. I take care of patients daily. And I wanted to point out that I was first discussed this in September of 2023, so you can go back to my Substack and see the very beginning of this story, and from the perspective of a citizen and a physician. And I guess what I want to say is, when you start analyzing, and I have analyzed, the messaging from the administration, as well as the cop in the court, which leads to various conjectures as to what might be planned. I've dedicated a whole post analyzing the draft proposal, which you're about to be shown. I'm not sure that you've read it yet. And what stands before us in a nutshell is that Lee, Lee Hospital or Lee Health is arranging, or has arranged its own state legislation specifically requesting that we dissolve our public charter and trust to legally absolve them from taking public responsibility for our district's health safety net. Further, violating its own legislative language, so far, they've failed to list their assets and liabilities. I have, on July 16th, I got acknowledgement of my request on July 13th for seven items to be given to me through the public records disclosure. That has not happened yet. They're basically looking over the bylaws that they propose for their new corporation. They're going to hand over potentially three board members to take this public trust from us. And with that, those assets, whatever they might be, will be swept from the public's eye and placed under a private nonprofit corporation. In exchange, they offer a Lee Health-financed, three-member oversight board that's in the draft that you're about to see. I'm, I'm asking you to pay very clear attention to what's been written for you, and you're being asked to accept because you need to negotiate a lot differently, in my opinion, on behalf of the public. There are clear loopholes to allow them out of the safety entity should certain things occur.
And I thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning and speak to you. I had not planned on speaking. I always find it interesting to hear what's on the minds and the hearts of our citizens, and boy, we've got some good things going on here in this chambers this morning. I do ask you to take the moral high ground, vote to pass this resolution that stands against Amendment Four. I strongly oppose it, and you have the opportunity to oppose this also for all the reasons that have been stated here. And the gentleman that spoke so passionately put tears in my eyes this morning. I have listened to citizens that have come before you about contamination of their community, and I'm not really up on those issues. I've had some other things going on, but I come here before you to tell you to listen to them. I implore you to listen to them. I am a Camp Lejeune toxic water survivor, and I have been suffering with various forms of cancer since I was 46 years old. I'm 70 years old now. I am currently undergoing more evaluation for cancer at the Mayo Clinic, and the cancers that I have have been identified by our federal government as being caused by the contamination that occurred for 30 years in Camp Lejeune that the Department of the Navy knew about, the Marine Corps knew about, and our federal government knew about, and they turned a blind eye on. The suffering that has occurred as a result of that contamination is, is horrific. There is a cemetery outside of Camp Lejeune where so many babies have been buried that were in the wombs of their mothers, that suffered horrific abnormalities, and they didn't even make it to be born. And the cellular, the, the things that are happening right now in this community at a cellular level, in the children and then the adults, are not going to be seen potentially until decades later in their lives. You have an opportunity now to listen to these citizens, to work with them, to, to get this cleaned up, to get this taken care of, and to prevent untold suffering that may occur down the road in citizens that you have an opportunity to protect right now. I ask you to not let it be your legacy that you knew about this and you turned a blind eye on it. These citizens have been very passionate. I don't really know the specifics of the contamination. It sounds like it's ground and water.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I, I ask you to listen to them, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Yes. Please state your name when you come up.
Good morning. I'm Kristy Thornton, and I am actually going to speak on behalf of, well, not on behalf of Lee Health, but I was recently put through the Innovation Incubator. It wasn't really a class. We were chosen through an application process, and I am here to tell you that Lee Health is very community-minded, and we are working toward innovative ways to serve this community in new and innovative ways, and we're using strategy to get there. And that's basically all I want to say, and thank you again, Lee Health, for putting me through that program. It was really a transformational time in my life. I also started, started a business as a result of that experience, so I thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? State your name, please.
Hello, my name's Amorilla Saltemarano. I'm a resident of Lee County. I've been living here all my life, and I just want to add my voice to the many that you've heard this morning in urging you to say no against Amendment Four as a county, just like Collier County has done. just like Collier County has done. I think that the, when you read the amendment four, what they're proposing, it's very clear that what they're trying to do is just enshrining it into our constitution, and if you read it, you'll see that there's really no reason that we need to pass this, and there's not really another argument to here because we need to protect our children, and we have to protect the unborn from conception. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. A workshop update, Mr. Harner, could you please give us a workshop update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Immediately following this meeting, or if the board so chooses, following a lunch break, we will be discussing the Lee Health Conversion at Admin East.
Does anyone wish to speak on public comment at the workshop at this time?
On the.
You have another opportunity?
No. If you spoke once on it, but.
Separate.
Right?
Is it separate public comment, county attorney, or does it stay in public comment? It's listed as a separate one.
Listed as separate.
They can, Mr. Chairman, they can speak to the workshop topic.
Just to the workshop topic.
As a former healthcare attorney, in-house counsel, I've been following very carefully everything that's been going on. My husband is a physician in the area as well. One of the concerns that I have is this terminology of in perpetuity, and I recognize it sounds really good on its face, but I have concern about its efficacy and the ability to actually implement it in the long term. I'm also very concerned about the fact that it doesn't appear as though there is any give-back provision in the event in perpetuity doesn't end up coming into play. So I would just caution the counsel to consider if you go forward with this and you agree with the recommendation from the Health Board, that you make sure that there is some language in there that says that if the private organization does not follow through with the promises that they have made in perpetuity, that it then revert back to our public trust. Just something to consider. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak on workshop item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. If there's no further business in front of us, we are adjourned.